... together. Start off with the flag of allegiance.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, let's thank everybody for making, hope everybody liked the new time. It's very fun.
I wasn't there until I got out of, how was that, what, quarter to lunch or something?
Yeah.
Go drink some beer.
I'll drink some.
It's beating me up.
Hope everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Remember, motion, first by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none? Any carries? Okay. First item up is the resolution appointing members to the Oswego County Solid Waste Management Board. First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Twist. Martin, is there anything you'd like to say?
I have to abstain.
Oh, understood, yeah. That's correct. Everyone has a list of, so you, oh yeah, yes, I have to abstain as well.
I just said it this morning and I'll say it again, um, I just wonder when, um, maybe the Democrats will be offered a position or even notified that there are openings.
There's two openings right now, one in Plaramo and one in Hastings.
You, uh, are you interested?
I mean, it's nice to know.
Yeah, we've been looking.
Are you interested in being on them?
Well, I, I mean, not really in Plaramo or Hastings, but...
No, they meet, it's just that's what they represent.
See, what, it's actually set up, people don't realize back when the county first cited that landfill, they were sued, you know, went to court, and that was one of the concessions that, you know, people will have input. So that's how it was meant to form, was formed. So there's, there's stipulations like, you know, each town that has a facility and that there's members in addition to, you know, the chairman of the legislature, the chairman of the infrastructure committee. So, so there was a formal setup, that's why there's, you know, vacancies for certain.
We just never know anything's available, I just, you know, would love to know.
Understood, I'll make sure you're notified anything that comes through.
For the record, if you want to be on the environmental management, great, more than welcome.
Really?
Yeah, I'm the chairman of it, please, love to have you. I'm not even joking, love to have you.
Okay.
We can never find anybody that wants to be on it, I don't know who represents your area, but we can figure that out, so.
Can we ask people to come in and speak on issues that are important to the areas?
Okay.
Get with me after I'm very, okay, sounds good.
Understood. All in favor?
Nine.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Any carries? Okay, hopefully I weigh the two up standard, I forget.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry about that. The next resolution, is a resolution authorizing a budget modification to transfer funds from insurance recovery to highway supplies and expenses. First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Lockwood. Curious, like the same thing on?
Um, I just want to, maybe for the new members, um, I do this periodically through the year. We have, uh, when we have accidents throughout the county and we, we have a police report on it and, uh, we know there's damage to our railing or our signs or whatever happens to be in our right of way. We, um, we always bill our insurance, which goes to the county attorney's insurance fund. And then, when I get a bunch in there, I usually ask where it's back into our highways supplies and expense, so I can pay for the rail and the stuff that we had to put up, or signs or what have you, in the right of way. So that's what this is about.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Nine.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Next item up is a rev- resolution establishing capital project number 114, County Route 6 Bridge over Catfish Creek.
Uh, this is, um, we, for the new members, we have a bridge program that we follow that we just had updated, uh, two years ago, I believe it was. These two bridges are, we, we look at a five-year plan out. Do, kind of, when I do my budget, I put together a, like, a five-year projected project so that Phil has a rough idea of how much money's going to be coming out of the capital reserve for bridges and stuff throughout the years. Um, these two bridges that I'm asking for today, we're on this year's list for 2020. I do roughly between two and three bridges a year. Um, I start out with a couple because usually every two years, the state comes around and they inspect our bridges. So we get a report every two years and every now and then we get one that's red flagged and that gives us, uh, six weeks to, uh, rectify the problem or at least have a, a plan set up. So that we sense it through the, uh, state so that they know what we're doing with the bridge and whether we fix it or we gotta close it or whatever. So this, these two are on, on our bridge programs. Uh, this work is all done in-house. And, um, I was looking for your approval, he didn't get it.
Okay, any other questions?
I just, I just like to know that, uh, tobacco money is gone, so this bridges from here on out, we're paying for. So this is coming up, the bridges will be coming out of fund balance or reserve here on out.
Ninety-five percent reimbursement, right?
Not, it's not enough.
Is he still?
Peter.
Bummer.
All those in favor?
See, I think we got a vote out of it.
Nope, that's not doing it.
No way, uh, nobody even knows.
We're gonna make, we're gonna move it.
Yeah.
Second, I thought we had.
No.
I apologize, okay. Looking for a first, legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Chad. All those in favor?
Nine.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Any carries? Okay. And the next one we have up, it is the resolution authorizing expenditure from capital reserve number, oh, I forgot, I am a roll. Resolution establishing capital project number 116, Granis Road Bridge over Scrabba Creek. Moving it. First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Twist. Any questions? All those in favor?
Nine.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Any carries?
Yeah.
Apparently put the wrong date on, so if you want to fix that one up.
That's why I handed it back to you, it's two four, not two two.
Paul wanted to beat me up, so.
Okay, the next item up, IT 5, resolution authorizing expenditure from capital reserve number 21, building renovations for capital project number 73, floor covering replacements. Looking for motion to move this for discussion. Move it. First by legislator Martino, second by legislator House. I just want to start off by saying I had a conversation with, uh, John. And any of the, any major improvements, building renovations, things we do have coming, I had asked him if we can, he can make the list and give us a rough number on it so you guys not only have a chance to review it, but do it a month prior, a month or so prior to any action, so it gives you time to get out there and actually look at it. Except for the things that really had to be moved now, which is what we're doing now. But we'll see, John will explain some of that.
Yeah, we'll, uh, refresh our five-year, uh, look ahead on, on buildings, there are a couple of things coming up. Um, and then for this particular project, there are several, uh, buildings that, uh, the floor covering is successful, 25 years old, many of them have trip hazards. Um, you know, carpet's wrinkled up, floor tiles are crumbling. Um, and there, and there's a list of the floor, uh, flooring, um, this amount of comprehensive was to work, how we need to look at supporting this year. I'm requesting a hundred thousand out of the building renovation, you said.
Understand, any questions?
Yes, will we be buying the floor covering locally?
I have to, uh, bid for covering, so.
But can't we get most responsible better, I mean, even, so we gotta go with Syracuse's decision on that?
I, I believe that the municipal law on that one is, it's just, uh, unfortunately, it's the lowest bidder gets the project. Uh, we do have the opportunity, and we've used the opportunity, um, to contact local vendors if they have state contract pricing, and if they have state contract pricing on the item that we need, then we do go with the local, uh, vendor on that.
We have an outstanding vendor in Oswego.
Yes, I just noticed that, uh, John, the wording of the description on the budget map is the wording for the next resolution on water meters.
Uh-oh.
So I'd asked the committee to amend the budget modification to eliminate all words after like $100,000 in the budget description.
Do I have to? If I can say, for a motion to, can I do that while the other one's still on?
No, this is the one that's gotta be corrected.
Understand, looking for a motion to amend, first by legislator Martino, second by legislator House. All those in favor?
Nine.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
None.
Now on the original, or on the motion, amended motion. All those in favor?
Nine.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Any carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you for the English. Hopefully this one is correct.
Next. IT 6, resolution authorizing expenditure from capital reserve number 21, building renovations, capital project number 84, water replacements, water meter replacements. Is there anything you'd like to say on that, John?
You gotta make a motion to move it.
Yeah, motion to move to discussion. Uh, first by legislator Martino, second by legislator Lockwood.
So the one up, did it bring it soft?
Yeah, pretty much. I know.
Um, the city, Oswego has notified us, uh, a while back that they need to, they're converting all water meters and business owners are required to convert water meters to remote read meters. Also, uh, in November of 2019, they notified us that, uh, buildings with water meters, commercial buildings also need backfill prevention. There are various county buildings in, within the city limits that are lacking backfill prevention. Um, they all have sub three meters except for a couple that we did in-house last year, we did that with operational funds. Um, such a city has kept up their requests and enforcement of requiring this. Also, the village of Mexico is on here, they, uh, are requiring that as well. And their meter alone is $3,500 just for the meter. Um, and there's also one other item on this and it's, um, a, um, fire hydrant, we do have a bad fire hydrant and they did the test and inspected with fire hydrants at the public safety center that needs replacement. So that's included in this as well.
Understood, any questions?
Sure, we're responsible for a fire hydrant?
It's on our property, yes, there, there's a ring of fire hydrants holding. As public safety hand at the complex that are private, they're private fire hydrants, so you go so far in, and the city doesn't have responsibility for the fire hydrant.
I almost need that group.
Um, we'll, yeah, I'll ask Rich, I think Richard's the one also that, I'll, I'll get you that. So far in, and we have the ring that serves, serves the building in particular because I guess design, I don't know the exact mill area, but we'll get it for you.
They're distributing it and benefiting it from, from the sale of water. I certainly think they're responsible for that, right?
Well, hydrants aren't sold, they're not under the meter, that's the other thing, but I'll get, we'll get to that.
Well, you said hydrant, right?
One hydrant, well, one hydrant is bad, but we have, we own probably 12 to 14 of public safety center.
So those are average meter?
Yeah, uh, those aren't meter, those are not meter, or hydrants are not meter. So there's, there's, after you go so far into your property and it's serving your building. But I, I can't tell you the statute, but we'll get you that.
I gotta have a copy of that law.
Understood, let's see, we'll make sure. Let's see, Lockwood.
When I went by Howard Road National Bridge one day, they were, some guy was filling his water truck. So I made it, they stopped and asked me what he was doing, and he showed me, he had paperwork where he is allowed to do that, it's meters, so that they charge him directly. So, I mean, they're legal when they do it, they've got all of their paperwork in.
Right, that's people drawing on.
Drawing on.
Yeah.
We hope not.
Maurice here is the actual, it's the actual hydrant.
Hydrant, it is a, it's not, yeah, it's a.
I, I.
What is hydrant called?
We're responsible for hydrant.
Oh, five thousand, I don't know. It's definitely something worth looking into.
Even on Road, that fire hydrant down on private drive was put in because we're purchasing water from, I hate to even say it, Aqua, we should be buying from the city of Oswego or from the county of Oswego. But we're told you can't even touch those hydrants. So that is.
That may be because it's private. I'm sure there's a hell of a picture. Just have Rich look at it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do another. I find that amazing, do I?
Make them to make it out.
Understood, well, most of them down the floor, all those in favor?
Nine.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Any carries? Okay. Next one we have up is the resolution authorizing expenditure capital reserve number 146, highway and equipment for capital project number 113. Moving it. Equipment, move by legislator Martino, second by legislator Twist. Anything you want to say, Jim?
This is our, uh, 2020 equipment needs. Um, we have a man lift at the public safety center, it's a one-person lift that's used inside the public safety center to get some of the high areas. It failed its, uh, yearly inspection in, uh, November, uh, and there are no parts long, uh, longer available. Those originals are in jail, so it's 25 years old. Um, so it's one of those items when we have to work on school cats or anything else higher up. We can't get there. Um, I'm asking for some mowers, DSS. Um, we're adding a parking lot out there, the areas around the parking lot have to be mowed. We don't have a riding mower at DSS, sorry.
Let him mow with my hand.
Big one, you're telling me. Um, DMV, we're, we're looking at throwing an extra peep, uh, mower there as well, just to, so we're not crossing the highway with the mowers, the guys are doing that, so no one can do that. It scares the crap out of me, 55 mile car. Um, and then power brooms for our bocads, we purchased a tool cat last year with a broom on it and we use that at the complex. And it does a great job of, of getting all the, instead of dragging a piece of metal across sidewalk, either the snowblower or the bucket, clear out the snow really well and, you know, four inches or less. Reduces our, reduces the, uh, any slipperiness on the, on the, on the concrete. We have two other bocads, one at the shop over here, one of them that we use at public safety centers, I'm requesting some brooms, uh, attachments for those pieces of equipment. And then lastly, the forklift, we have a, uh, forklift at the, uh, BMG shop that we use. We take in all the county paper, uh, all the county paper products, uh, brochures and things and trivers on the store, kind of stuff there. And then right now it's lost one cylinder, Thompson and Johnson there, uh, have been up looked it over and it said, you're really ready for a major overhaul or replace the dinosaur. So, uh, that was, uh, the last thing on the floor.
Understood, question? Rick?
Are we putting riding lawnmowers in all these places?
Not at all of them, uh, Mexico will get one, do a own trailer. Fulton, again, distance. And then, uh, a rider at, at, the only, uh, hopper rider would be at the DMV because of the 41, so I don't have to try to get trailers and trucks and things over there.
No, by three riding lawnmowers, it'd be cheaper to have a lawn service. Save labor, you just, it'd be cheaper, I bet.
But these were, this was, it's not just three addition, these are, you had other ones in there.
They, they did die, I assume one had died in Fulton, I am adding one in, in, at the DMV. Mexico never had one, but we didn't have the need for one until we had the space.
Wow, I need a picture of that one.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, with the expansion of the kayak facility that they're gonna put by DMV, is this new mower gonna be able to do that, or is that gonna be additional piece of equipment or is that included in this?
It's a chopper.
Lower it into there.
I would, I would, yeah. We, and anything along 41 into the city, we'd be able to get to the kayak top. I don't know how it's gonna be finished down below yet.
I was under the impression that's gonna be from the DMV down towards there is gonna wind up being finished, that's why there's additional mowing in this.
Yeah, well, there's, there's some, we're, we're gonna start right away this spring, actually getting to the, uh, right where the pile of millings are, from the DMV to there. And then depending upon what the kayak facility does as well, uh, we're being able to maintain that. But I don't know what it's gonna look like down below campus, it hasn't been developed.
Understood. Any other questions?
If the state wants this split-in, why don't they take care of everything? Money-wise.
As far as?
Uh, I mean, they're probably waiting for us to pay that, right, Kurt? The jam or jet, which will.
I know, okay.
And, you know, the mowing and all, yeah, that should be taken care of, I doubt, it's a brilliant idea.
Or is the state?
What, you know, what?
States?
Were you just talking along the side of the road?
The kayak, for the kayak launch?
Yeah.
For the redesign of 41? The state, they give us a grant to, to build it, but the operational costs of the art. Cause the county.
They just, did they just tell us?
No, no, the county applying to the.
Okay. I'm all for giving it back, just not doing it. I wonder about the liability when they fall down to help, but that's another day.
Understood. Any other questions? All those in favor? Nine. Any opposed? One opposition, what's their shot? Any carries? Oh, we do it at one more, hit it, correct? 156.
Did you give a copy to everybody, Phil?
Yes, I did.
Well, you gotta.
I didn't give a copy, hopefully, you know, it's a resolution, I gave you a copy, good.
Okay, oh, okay, gotcha.
Understood, we'll do, we gotta move the resolution. So, correct.
No, that's all done, all the money's in place, all, all I would like is to work the bit, to award the award of the bench, you know, okay, I thought we had. It's just something that came in after the agenda was done.
I got you. Okay, we wanna get that over the way first here.
So what? If you wanted to explain that, I will.
Yeah.
What you see in front of you is a building that has, um, six bidders. We, back on, I think it was 2014 or 2015, we applied for some, uh, federal aid money, federal and state aid money to do two bridges up in Orwell. That, uh, is right there on 22, that crosses the, the nine-mile powerhouse in the, in the Salmon River. There are two bridges, they're quite long, they're quite high. Um, we hired Floyd Albert as the engineer. We've gone through everything, we finally got to the stage where we put it out to bid. Um, but, and you can see in front of you as the bidders are, the low bidder was Coyote Construction. I'm still waiting from the state, but we're 95% sure that they're gonna okay this Coyote Construction outfit. I have a meeting set with them next Tuesday in my office, a pre-construction meeting. Um, I guess what I'm asking the committee is, if you're fine with this low bid and the state finishes up their projects, or finishes up looking at their end of it, I would just like your blessing to go ahead and give it to these people so that they can order their steel so we can get started early this spring on it, because like I said, there are two bridges up there. They are hoping to do both bridges this year, if they can get started early enough. And I would really, that would really be a plus for us if we didn't have to keep that road shut for another year afterwards. Well, that's all I'm asking for, is your approval to okay the low bid when everybody's signed off on it.
Understand, looking for a motion to award.
Make motion to accept a low bid for a construction project, uh, providing.
State's approval.
State's approval.
And so, we're still, we're still, we're still, first by legislator Martino, second by legislator Lockwood.
I do, so is that just a common practice? It just always, the state always has to approve the bidder for a bridge?
Well, yeah, because you got federal and, and state, what they do is they look at, they have to, they have to go through the, the minority, you have to have somebody in the minority to make sure that the contractor has minority and, uh, certain things that, um, cause they have to pay prevailing wages and all that. So they look at the contractor themselves.
Right.
They go through all their paperwork. And, uh, yeah, because this bridge here is, uh, like I said, federally and state funded, so our portion of this 5 million, that's 5%, so we're getting two bridges down fairly cheap, which are big bridges. And that's what we normally do, is all of our big bridges, we try to seek, um, federal and state aid because there is money out there for them, that's what we try to do. We've got one on the list in Parrish that will probably get, hopefully, looked at or starting to get funded possibly this year or next year. So it's, we've got some help.
You got one on 38?
38 in Parrish, yeah, so open steelback grid right now.
Understood, any other questions? Any other questions? All those in favor, awarding to Coyote Construction. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Any carries? Thank you. And I did it one first here on this, next one, third on the fuel management system, is that straightened out?
Fuel management?
Yes, that was all straightened out, so.
Yes, we, uh, know there were some issues on that, I didn't know if it needed to be tabled. No, the, um, the pump doctor and, uh... Okay, the item we're talking about is, uh, OSW 039-19, fuel, state fuel management system replacement. Two lowest bidders on there, pump doctor and fleet data system, they withdrew their bid. The pump doctor, they, um, are currently what we have now, and the system is not very good. We don't, we can't get any parts to work, we can't get too much help on it. Um, they put a bid in, and according to the engineer, B and L was the engineer on this one. They apparently, the excuse they gave us was that they didn't, uh, allow for any excavation in the project, so they didn't, they withdrew that way. And the other one, we kinda didn't want because they're out in California. So we're gonna, we would like to go with this, uh, the third low bidder, they're out in Woke.
Third low bidder, which is La Valley.
La Valley, yes.
I'll make a motion to go with La Valley.
Understand, first by legislator Twist, second by legislator Martino. All those in favor?
Nine.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Give us a word that's to La Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, okay, that's it. There, we do have information on things here. Uh, John, if you want, I'll touch base on the issue with the, uh, the work in the social services.
Sure, uh, first up is, uh, DSS, I'm asking the committee's permission to, uh, put an RFP out for architectural engineering services to, uh, provide the specifications for exterior door replacement. There are thirty-seven-year-old doors that need operators on it, storefronts and that. As well as, there's a lot of grade issues and the handicap accessibility out there, uh, that are gonna, should be addressed. We've also had some employees fall, there have been no cop cases in that area. We've had other people fall for other reasons that in that area. We haven't had any, uh, lost time or lost, uh, wages. Uh, and it's kind of a mess out there, uh, to, to put it bluntly. Um, I estimate that the project would be about $200,000. Um, so I'm just asking permission to put an RFP out to, uh, find out what the architectural engineering fees would be to perform the work, and also the RFP, I would ask for, uh, for a studio, it's also necessary to be replaced, to see if it, if it's $200,000 or less.
Is this something we could wait so we have an opportunity to go out and take a look at it?
Yeah.
I mean, we need an engineer for a door.
New York.
Anything over $5,000?
New York state education law, $5,000 or more, you need an engineer. I hear you.
Why are the doors so expensive? We just do it piece by piece, start a project. $1,199,000. They're doing other projects.
Okay, I was under the impression that this was, had to be a little handicap accessibility.
It, it is, it is as well, yeah. And that's why you also need the architect engineer to make sure they're all there. Cause it's a combination of things, it's not just the actual, you see, wait, I get to the door, uh, every, helps a whole, that's, but. And again, I'm looking for the RFP, it doesn't commit us any funds, that will take time to develop any. I mean, I don't know, I just want to wait even at an RFP like that.
So what you're asking us is just to kinda get, just basically a bid to see what we're looking at for a price? We're not spending money.
Spending any money, only my time to develop the RFP and get.
$200,000 on my door.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, it is that door, it was grade work and there's, there's others.
But we do have time where we could, uh... But we do have time where we could, uh, many members that would allow us, so if we and it also, until next month, it'll give us some time, we can actually go out and take a look at it before we make a decision.
Sure.
Throwing it out there in suggestion, when you have something like this, is there any way, I mean, we all have visual cameras there, right? I mean, you can take a few pictures and pop it up on the screen and say, hey, this is the grade that needs to be graded. These are the doors. So we all get a kinda, uh, bird's eye view of what's happening.
Well, it's, uh, one of the things we had spoke about, about when there's different things that are gonna be outside of his budget to do. If he can get us a list, we can go out there and update, including some pictures and things like that, so when they say.
Chris Volco, how old are you, Joe?
Yeah. We have most of the committee in there.
You know why I'd rather write it first?
Understood. Any other questions on that? Okay. All right, the next, uh,
Next one is a water meter backhoe that got approved. I had to test your permission to being able to work with an entire county to put it out for a bid.
Understood.
That works.
Understood. And the next one's yours.
Energy reduction program, um, Smart Watt approaches, um, the county quite often, quite often at NISEC as well, some of their meetings. On the, um, you know, energy reduction, uh, programs that are offered. They did a, uh, audit for us, an initial audit in twenty seventeen. And one of the gentlemen had approached me since then and said, hey, would you want to take the next step further and do a investment grade audit? Um, to look at county facilities and potential energy savings. Um, and I don't, I'm asking the committee if we want to, A, have them come in and speak to the committee so they can show you what's going on and what's going on in their potential savings. Um, and then we both, I won't even mess with this if the group wants me to get that set up at some point.
I think everyone would agree on that if we hear it correctly.
They did a fabulous job for me on two buildings and cut my power in half.
Smart Watt or?
Smart Watt, yeah.
Um, you want a thirty minute?
Well, this shows a project invested up two million dollars.
Right. Right, right now their initial look is you gotta come with pony up about two million, then there's a twenty year payback on it.
Is this for our building in the county?
This is for, uh, uh, most of the buildings in the county they went through. And that was, that was, uh, in twenty seventeen. There are some things that have been addressed.
Is the grid matching? Is there any match points out there right now?
There's not much for municipality. There's hundreds of dollars here, a thousand dollars here, but there isn't substantial.
That's what's weird.
But, you know, what we can do is we can, I mean, it's only their time. If the committee wants them, I'd tell them to get like a thirty minute.
Does anyone, is everyone comfortable with, uh, making arrangements to have them on the space or the committee?
Yeah, I'd like to see if the investment's worth the reward. I mean, more of a savings.
And then, and then the other, uh, quite more, but again, I have, uh, I kinda defer to Phil. Well, the, this is, if we went with Smart Watt, we'd have to, uh, do a resolution that they'd be the only vendor to, so that's another funky thing we'd also have to do.
Lots of vendors.
Right, or do we put it out the bid and then do you get the Macintosh amp or the Alapels? So there's, there's a couple of things. They're, they're looking for, hey, would you like to just sign the master, like any vendor, they just, you know, would the county like to sign that agreement with us only exclusively? Um, but, so.
Well, these are some of the questions that they gave us.
Certainly.
John, have they looked at our bills initially, if they glanced at anything?
They did. In twenty seventeen, we provided them with copies of, uh, all of our bills in our, in our buildings. They did a tour of our buildings. Did you ever see this? I don't have too many left because people have did that for it. Uh, and went through and we identified areas of improvement. So we did take care of like the rooftop units at the public safety center. It was under tobacco money. And, um, you know, they, they felt we could have some savings, but again, there is some decent upgrade or decent investment on the county side. Um, it would have to happen.
Is this all the lighting system?
It would be LED where there isn't today, LED.
But they maintained the lights and bulbs and everything for like ten years, don't they, or eight years?
I, I didn't see that unless that they would maintain anything.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a great question on that. And maybe for the municipality, they won't, I don't.
I know there's often been a lot of questions surrounding this, so maybe this would give us an opportunity to answer those. There's no commitment to it.
Right.
At least hear what they said, because I can tell you, if it's a two million dollars.
It's a lot.
Two million dollars, and it says savings of fifty-four thousand, or maybe ninety-two thousand.
Why don't we just buy our own LED light bulbs and replace them again?
We've, we've done, we've done that in some of our areas. Whenever we've done an office renovation internally, we go through and put in new fixtures. A lot of times through it, we're actually uh, cut back an amount of ballots we carry through. Ballots sometimes can cost fourteen dollars. A two-by-two light fixture, LED is thirty dollars.
Yeah.
So we've just replaced, replaced it. But of course, I don't want a room where there's two LEDs in the rest, so we're trying to do areas at the time. But whenever we do renovation, uh, and we're doing lighting in that renovation, we do change it out to LED. Um, does committee one look for March, the March committee, you want me to push them to April?
What's the general consensus here? Something I would be interested in hearing.
John, could we ask them for a building by building?
Breakdown?
Um, they did, this one, and I'll make some copies and get it to people, I guess, for the whole, but they've already did a building by building. This is, again, is the next step. Um, piece would be the other. So they've done an initial. And I, and I'm sure they'll be have to explain that and use, you know, put it up on the, on the TV and show you where, where they were looking at initial.
Got you. So you could just continue to change out fixtures in-house.
Right. One, one of the oddities was.
Going ninety-two thousand dollars.
We're broke and people are leaving.
Oh, I'm getting it. That's why when you said two million dollars, I didn't.
I mean, I'm on board savings. I mean, we took eighteen lights to an amp meter. It was like the equivalent of one professional fixture.
Oh, yes.
So it's a significant difference. But I did, I did the indoor arena. I took all the high bays out and it was unbelievable savings. Uh, but two million dollars is just. Plus there's some grants out there.
But we wanna not bother having them come and waste their time, because I can tell you at the end of it, if there's a price tag of two million dollars, I don't think there's a first.
Why don't we ask them to assess our worst building and give us a savings analysis? You don't.
Uh, I, I'll ask them that. But I think one of the, the, the catches on energy, any, any of these energy companies or energy saving companies is the aggregate. They got some buildings where this is the worst, but also it may also have the largest, uh, capital laying that balances out with some of the buildings where maybe we're only replacing some minor lighting. I mean, and that, that's one of the things it is, it's an aggregate of all the buildings collectively. I will ask though, can we, here's our worst building, our most expensive building through the complex, um, DSS and the public safety center. So we can ask them for that eventually.
Yeah. Ask for the worst.
Okay. So how about I ask a few questions or open them to the next one?
Just, uh, just get back with us.
And get, get a little more info and then we'll get, uh.
Absolutely. Sounds good. And we'll decide whether or not. Great. Okay, one last thing we have here is we have a request from Harvard Festivals Incorporated. This is an annual thing. It's at no cost of accounting, but they use the parking lot next door. They're well aware of all the insurance things and whatnot and, uh, Council Ritchie and the whole guy, they use the parking lot next door here.
They're asking early.
Yes, they just, yeah, very early this year.
Want to make sure we didn't deny.
Does anyone have any issues with that? Have we done it in the past?
I'll make.
First motion by legislator Twist, second by legislator Lockwood. Any questions?
Want to say the durable certificate of insurance naming up first?
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Carry it.
Can I ask one quick question, sir?
Yes.
What gas do we burn in all the vehicles in the county? What level, what grade fuel?
Mid-range.
Our previous Swego time.
Actually, mid, on our bid, mid, mid-grade is cheaper than that.
Well, I, I did some research on it and, um, the low grade is a bad fuel and bad fuel. Because the cheap fuels fire before the piston is top dead center, probably bad mileage. And I argued like crazy with my husband about it and that was his answer to me. I put great fuel in and I got way better mileage. But Sariel bragged about going to eighty-seven, which he said like terrible for, like, cheap fuel.
We've always had, uh,
Big grade.
I don't, mid-grade's been, always been lower.
It's last winter on the edge.
They get a better fuel. Understand. Any other issues? There are none. Put a proper motion, motion to adjourn by legislator Twist, second by legislator Lockwood. All those in favor?
Aye.